I will call the regular town council meeting to order on February 27th at 5:58. Mayor Mark Sukka.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Uh, Aaron, any amendments to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Um, public comments?
None.
Okay, and I don't see anybody out there either. Um, consent agenda, anybody have any comments, council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very unanimously. Uh, reports, anybody, council? Go, Luke.
Yep. Um, thank you, Mark. I just want to thank the staff for the effort that you guys put in the report section of the packet. Um, so I saw there was the Safe Built Report as well as the NOCO Humane Society. I know I asked for that, so I appreciate that information. Uh, for me, I think the reports provide a valuable insight to what's happening in the town that we don't always get to talk about. So, uh, thank you, staff, for putting all that together.
Um, on that vein, I wanted to thank everybody who, uh, made the State of the Town address happen last week. Uh, although it's the five of us on the microphone, the truth is, it's, uh, everybody in the town that makes that happen every day. And also, of course, our, uh, great folks from Slate who, uh, who helped herd the cats to make that happen. So I just want to say thank you.
Great. Um. Aaron, town manager update.
I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions.
Okay. From the, uh, report that was in there, okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Uh, finance committee, Lisa. Do I see you brought along a little buddy? Do you want to introduce her? Great, thanks for having me here. Uh, community development report, um, Matt, anything new?
I have nothing to add, but I'll answer questions if you have any.
Any questions? Uh, police report, uh, Chief Jones. Anybody? Okay. Uh, business, resolution number 23, series 2024, a resolution adopting transportation plan update. Um, and as the council remembers, we had a, uh, work session on this, uh, a little while back. So Eric, with that in mind?
Yeah, so I was just gonna do a quick couple of things. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I've had over, you know, 30 years with transportation plans, um, doing many of these. And as I stepped in, it was a year and a half process, so I'm sure they were scared when I came on board that I was gonna change everything, but no, I think they did a great job, staff and the consultants. Um, there was just a few things, but just wanted to mention that. Also wanted to mention, we did have a new engineer with us, Kim. Uh, I won't pronounce her last name, I'll let her do that, because I'm sure I'll butcher it, but, uh, uh, she's a, thanks to council, she's a great addition. And then if the, uh, transportation plans approved, there are some policies and programs that need to be implemented, and she would be help, would definitely be a help on those. So just wanted to mention that. And with that, I'll, um, go ahead and let Eric.
Oh, you are gonna talk.
He just wanted to jump in at first. I'll keep my part short. Um, no, as, uh, Justin indicated, we've been working on the transportation plan update for the last year and a half. Um, we've held several public meetings, open houses, and this is the accumulation of all of that. Um, we've been working with, uh, Felsberg, Holton, Ullvig, and Jenny Young is here this evening to do the presentation on the report that they've put together. So I'm gonna turn it over to her for all the details.
I see the arrow. Good evening, Mayor, town councillors. Um, okay, do I have control? No. Okay, I'll give you a heads up.
There you go.
Okay. Um, good, good evening, um, Jenny Young with Felsberg, Holton, Ullvig. Um, tonight I, um, have a brief, um, presentation for you summarizing the process that we went through to develop the transportation plan, um, and highlighting the recommendations of the plan. I'll go through a little bit of the, um, what a transportation plan is and what it is not, um, the transportation goals, and then highlight the, the recommendations. Next slide. Um, so what a transportation plan is, it's really a process of gathering information from, both from the community and, um, from the, the transportation, you know, infrastructure and what exists today and what we anticipate in the future to be able to create a plan that will, um, provide guidance to the town, um, you know, as you continue to develop, to have, um, projects to move into your capital improvement program, and to have a plan in place as development occurs, um, to make sure that you're getting the system that you need to accommodate the, the, um, community's, um, mobility and safety needs. Next slide. Um, a transportation master plan is, is not a detailed evaluation of, you know, the developments, each individual development's transportation needs. It's, it stays, the transportation plan necessarily stays, um, relatively high level. Um, it's not a safety audit or a speed evaluation or determination of specific traffic control at, at a certain location. Those are all next steps that come that, you know, follow the transportation master plan. Um, and it is also not a plan for improving, um, CDOT facilities like I-25, um, County, uh, County Road 14 and so forth that are owned and operated by, um, the Colorado Department of Transportation, but we will touch on those a, a bit in the plan. Um, it really does focus on the local road system that is owned and maintained by the town of Timneth. Uh-oh, did we lose it? Um, yes, I think we're, I think we're good, yes, thank you. Um, so, um, in the, um, Eric mentioned that we went out to the community, um, a few different times during the planning process. The first phase of engagement was a, at the end of 2022 and early 2023, um, we had both in-person and, um, online activities. Um, and really in this first phase, we were asking the community, um, for ideas about how to improve safety and mobility in, um, in the town. Um, and we really had great engagement, um, with over 2,700 total engagements. Um, a lot of, um, we had a, a, an interactive map where folks could drop a pin and, and make a comment, and then people would like and, or dislike, and so that's, it was really kind of a way of gathering kind of, um, organically ideas that people had of areas that could be, um, improved in the, in the community. Um, next slide. Um, so that the community's input paired with, um, the technical evaluation of the transportation system was, were used directly to inform specific projects that you'll see in the transportation plan programs to address systematic issues, um, as well as the vision for biking, walking, driving, and riding transit in Timneth. Um, the second phase of engagement was in the fall of 2023, um, and I, this, this slide shows, um, some of the, what we heard about the priorities that, that people would like to see addressed in the community. And I would say that the, the kind of overarching message that we got from that phase of community input is that we need to take a balanced approach in enhancing the multimodal, um, transportation network in Timneth, um, to make sure that we're meeting everybody's needs. Um, next slide. We, um, we presented the draft, um, vision and goals at the, the second phase of community engagement and asked, um, which goals were most important to them. Um, and we've sorted the goals, um, on this slide based from highest, um, priority on down the list. So safety was the, the priority or the goal that, um, that received the, the highest number of kind of votes from the community, um, followed by walkable and bikeable, reliable, vital, regional, and cost-effective. And I, even though these are sorted in sort of priority order, um, all of them did receive some, you know, votes from the community, so, um, certainly all of the goals, um, need to be a, addressed, but I think it is important to, to note especially that safety is, is a, is a very, of, a very, um, high importance to the community. Um, so all of that, the input from the, the two phases of the, of community engagement as well as the, um, technical evaluation led to, um, the Master Streets Plan that's presented here. Um, the Master Streets Plan establishes future road connections, the functional classifications, um, e, of each road in the, in the, the town's growth management area. Um, it identifies whether the road in the future should be urban versus rural and what that cross-section looked, should look like, the number of through lanes in 2045 and then beyond the 2045 planning horizon, um, kind of based on build-out of the community. Um, and the Master Streets Plan is the basis for, um, the, the design standards that in the transportation pla, um, plan ties each of these, um, different functional classifications to your street standard, so that indicates, you know, the access spacing, um, design standards for, for each different, um, type of roadway. Next slide. Um, so the projects that comprise the Master Streets Plan were broken up into three time periods, the near term, which is from now until 2030, um, the long term, which is 2031 through 2045, and then beyond 2045. Um, and the, they were broken up into those timeframes based on the need for the, the projects and the anticipated timing of development in the community. We did use the North Front Range Regional Travel Demand Model to understand the traffic growth, um, the, you know, the, um, the growth and the region as a whole, and then we modified it, um, within the town of Timneth to align with your comprehensive plan and make sure that we're, um, estimating, you know, where the growth and development will occur, um, between now and 2045 and beyond. Um, so the near-term projects, um, um, project list includes about 15 projects, and there are really kind of three areas of focus in the near-term projects. Improving the Main Street and Parkway Corridor, um, completing missing sidewalk gaps along Main Street Harmony and Three Bell Parkway, and improving some critical road sections on Bus Grove, Hector, um, Folsom Parkway, and Prospect Road. Um, you may, um, have noticed that Harmony Road, widening of Harmony Road was missing, um, from the near-term, um, project list. Um, you have done a, a really great job of proactively planning for an improving Harmony Road. We did a, a study to look at the origins and destinations of, um, cars traveling on Harmony Road through Timneth and found that about half of the trips on Harmony Road are from outside of Timneth. That means they don't have either an origin or a destination within the town, they're passing through your community. Um, so although the, the traffic forecasts do suggest the need for six lanes and, you know, in, in the, um, in the coming years, um, widening of Harmony to six lanes would induce further demand of, you know, non-Timneth trips onto Harmony Road, um, for not, mainly because Harmony is such a great corridor, you know, it is the best of the parallel route options, um, to make that east-west movement. Um, and widening to six lanes would, you know, kind of further create a barrier to north-south movements in the town, particularly for bicyclists and pedestrians. So because of that, if you'll go to the next slide, we're recommending, um, deferring the widening of Harmony Road to six lanes beyond the near term, it's, it's actually included in the, the long-term, um, phasing plan. Um, instead, what we, what the plan recommends is waiting for the surrounding regional roadway network to be improved, that includes, um, State Highway 392, um, State Highway 14 to kind of catch up and provide those alternate routes, and instead in the near term focusing on improving Timneth street networks, um, to provide alternative routes to get to I-25 and to get to Four Collins, um, beyond just, um, Harmony Road. Um, and really optimizing the efficiency of the Harmony Road corridor and enhance, enhancing options for alternative travel modes. Um, and-
What would be, what would be, uh, could you shoot that slide back so I can say the right words? What, what would be things that you would do to optimize efficiency of the corridor?
Well, good question, and the, and actually, you've already begun to implement, um, some of those improvements. Um, so the, um, the staff just recently implemented signal timing improvements along the, the Harmony Road corridor so that the signals are synchronized to help make it, you know, make it so that you get a green light more often, um, as you're traveling along the corridor, so that, that makes the flow of traffic and the, the efficiency of the corridor better.
I drive Harmony every single day, three or four times, and you can definitely notice, uh, a better flow than what was there before, so good job.
Good, that's great. And so on the next slide, that was one of the, the first kind of, um, town-wide programs that we, um, had, you know, we're talking about in the transportation plan, and it's already been implemented on Harmony Road, which is great. Um, a couple other programs to point out that the transportation plan recommends a traffic calming and pedestrian crossing policy and program to establish, establish best practices and procedures for evaluating and implementing traffic calming measures in, um, in neighborhoods in the community and pedestrian crossing treatments, and then a safe routes to school program to identify, um, walking and biking routes and to really optimize the drop-off and pickup operations at, um, in coordination with the school district. Um, the long-term projects, um, are anticipated to be needed between now and, or, between 2031 rather, and 2045. Um, and this is really based on, these projects were identified based on the travel demand forecast for 2045 and what we anticipate, um, in terms of the growth and the, and the, the improvements needed to accommodate the growth both within Timneth and regionally by 2045. Um, and then the remaining projects, um, are categorized as being future projects sometime beyond 2045. Um, this includes upgrades with, um, with development, particularly in the northern part of the GMA where, um, you know, development is, is some time off, as well as future, um, widening of some of the corridors in the, in the core area of town like Colorado Boulevard, Main Street, and Prospect. Um, this map shows the regional projects. These projects are all under the jurisdiction of either the Colorado Department of, of Transportation or a neighboring jurisdiction. While they're not the responsibility of the town of Timneth, um, we thought it was important to include them in the transportation plan to, um, to recognize your support for these projects, they are important projects and will certainly help, um, the mobility and, and, um, ease of mobility around the, the community and provide those, you know, some of those longer distance, um, connections and, that are, that are important to the regional travel. Um, moving on to the pedestrian plan, um, the pedestrian plan shows the location of existing and future sidewalks and shared-use paths as well as regional trails and other trails in the community. Um, the, all of the cross-sections in your street standards do include sidewalks, so the pedestrian network will be built as the streets are, um, are built to meet your standards. Um, and, um, connecting those, the, um, the sidewalks along the streets to the trail system is particularly important to make sure that you have that kind of connection and being able to use the, the on-street and off-street for both recreational and transportation per, purposes to get to destinations like, um, a coffee shop and schools and so forth. Um, and then similarly, the bicycle plan, um, shows the location of, um, existing and future bike lanes and the, um, trails in the, in the community. Um, again, your street stand- Again, your street standards do include bike lanes. So these bike lanes will be built over time as the streets are upgraded to meet your standards. The bike plan does also include guidance on creating a low-stress network within developments and looking at making sure that the Collector Road system connects and is logical and provides a connected network of bicycle facilities that are off of the arterial streets, so that everybody can have a place to ride their bike that feels comfortable. Not everyone is comfortable riding on arterial streets like Harmony Road. So that will be built over time as development occurs and as the streets are built to standard. And then finally, we have the transit plan. There is no transit service in the town of Timneth today. So the transit plan really focuses on leveraging Timneth's proximity to transit services that exist in Fort Collins and especially the Harmony Transfer Center, which has been identified as a regional mobility hub. So I'll highlight some of the recommendations. Partner with Transport to look at the possibility of a limited number of future Harmony bus rapid transit trips into Timneth, looking at how to make it easier to get to that Harmony mobility hub where there is regional transit service by advancing the bike and ped connections and exploring opportunities for grants to improve micro-transit, micro-mobility options to get to that mobility hub. Partnering with Ride NoCo to promote alternative forms of transportation. Next slide. Coordinating with CDOT to advocate for bus staying service improvements like increased frequency, evening and weekend trips to Union Station for recreation and access to Den. And continuation of the bus staying to Broncos service. Coordinate with Saint to assess the possibility of expanding service into Timneth. The service area ends at I-25 right now. Promote Groom as an option for residents to travel to Den. And finally, for a recommendation to continue participation in the Front Range Passenger Rail Planning efforts. So I went through that fairly quickly, but hopefully that gave you a reasonable overview of the plan. And I think you've had the plan in hand for a few weeks. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How'd you know? Mainly just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you so much for all the work on this. We were commenting before we got started that it was the Timneth Safety Fair two years ago. That was the first time that I had a chance to interact with the project. And I thought you all did a really great job. I'll comment on the Harmony signal timing. I do agree that traffic is flowing much better on Harmony. I am hearing from some residents that were unaware of this, some frustration getting out of their neighborhoods now that turn arrows that they had been used to being on-demand are no longer on-demand and they're waiting two to three minutes. So I think, big picture, huge improvement, but there is some frustration. So I've been working to educate, but I encourage folks to do that. I thought it was really educational that going to six lanes on Harmony too soon is actually counterproductive. So thank you very much for that education. The number that our pass-through traffic is 46 or 51% is a little bit lower than we had often quoted. I think that's probably a result of we're growing. But for a long time, our narrative was, it wasn't us, it's everybody coming through. And I think that number is interesting. And I don't know that we can always continue to say that. I am curious, a lot of the traffic study numbers came in 2021. And I'm curious if your thought with the post-COVID effect, at least my experience was, we were not back to a normal traffic pattern at that time. And if you think that's something that we need to revisit in the future or if we can rely on those numbers?
Yes, overall, 2021 recovered reasonably well and is reasonably comparable to 2019. I mean, of course, we have changes in the way that we travel and the way that we work, probably most remarkably, that continue to be different than the pre-pandemic days. But 2021 is generally accepted as being a reasonable year. We pretty much just discard 2020 in terms of all traffic and crash data because it's such an anomaly of a year. But 2021 did seem to regulate fairly well.
Okay, great. And then the last thing I just compliment is the good attention to the multimodal concerns and realizing that a transportation plan isn't just about cars. And I think continuing to have focus on particularly safety in all of our transportation modes is good. So I appreciated you really highlighting that.
Good, thank you.
I had just a couple of comments. First, you spent an extensive amount of time in the report talking about all the ways you were collecting data, explaining where are your sources of data, all the public outreach you were doing. And so I appreciate the very comprehensive explanation and involving the community extensively with this report. It's good to get the big data, but also just some of the on-the-ground anecdotes can be useful too. So I really appreciate that. And then what also struck me was you had a very well-balanced approach here, covering a lot of different priorities, whether it's pedestrian or multimodal or cars being the significant one. So you were able to balance an approach to all those, but also an appropriate allocation of resources in terms of where you're recommending projects. So that's what stuck out to me. And I appreciate both the depth and the breadth of the scope that you covered here. And I think it's good guidance for the town.
Great, thank you.
Jenny, I just have one question for you. One statistic stuck out to me, which was in Timneth, it looks like our residents spend 24% of our house income on transportation. And I think combined with housing, we were higher than regional standards or regional goals. How do you factor that into a report like this? And what does that mean for the town of Timneth?
Well, it helps us to understand the travel patterns and what's happening. And in a town like Timneth, it's not too surprising that the transportation costs are high. And that combined housing and transportation cost is really important because you want together for those to be at a reasonable level. But really, that in combination with other census data that helps us to understand where are people traveling to? Where do people work who live in Timneth? And I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but there is a significant travel pattern that happens out of Timneth every day for work and into Timneth for people who work in Timneth too. So those kind of help us to understand where people need to go and what is actually happening in terms of the transportation dynamics that occur in the community every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23, Series 2024, Resolution Adopting Transportation Plan Update?
I move to approve Resolution Number 23, Series 2024, a resolution adopting the transportation plan update.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 23, Series 2024, a resolution adopting the transportation plan update, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. Resolution Number 23, Series 2024, a resolution adopting the transportation plan update, passed unanimously. Resolution Number 24, Series 2024, a resolution authorizing budget expenditures for the construction of Wildwing Park Phase 1. Brian?
All right, thank you. Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be here today to talk about Wildwing Park. We've been working on this for quite some time. I have a pretty brief presentation to go through, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Background on the project, we adopted the master plan for Wildwing Park about a year ago. It was an eight-month master planning process. We had two public outreach efforts during that process. We did an RFP for Architectural Services for a collab architecture that was awarded in the summer, late summer last year. We moved through creating construction documents for Phase 1 over the summer and fall. And then we did a RFP for General Contractor and Construction Management, which was issued in September of 2023. That RFP had both base bid and alternates included. And that's a little bit different than how we bid some of these other projects. So talking about the RFP scope, our base bid was what's shown in the blue here. So that's the restroom building and pavilion, the adaptive playground, four pickleball courts, a basketball court, sand volleyball court, the community garden, and then landscape and irrigation to support everything. The alternate bid, which was on the north edge of the project, is the large and small dog parks and the north parking lot. I think as you remember when we talked about the master plan and phasing the master plan, that the access that goes through there right now kind of makes it so that the parking lot and the dog park need to go hand-in-hand as they are constructed. So we originally had those allocated for Phase 2. But as we were going through the construction documents and our cost-assessing efforts, we thought that there was a chance we'd be able to afford to put those in with Phase 1. So we wanted to get pricing with them when we bid the base bid for Phase 1. So that blue base bid was planned for 2024 construction. The CIP budget for that is $5,775,000. And then that bid alternate area in red was originally slated for 2026 with a CIP budget of $1 million. And it did also include those tennis courts that you can see that are carved out there between the blue and the red. Right now, in today's dollars, we're estimating that those tennis courts would be about $360,000. We did receive two proposals on the RFP. Both proposals are attached in the packet. We received one from ECI and one from Hall Irwin. We both were very qualified to do the work. They had great example projects. The proposals were scored based on the criteria in the RFP. They were scored by the design team and the Parks Department. And unanimous from all the reviewers was the recommendation to award to ECI. Here you can see that the breakdown of that scoring, we had price as 25% of the project, but then we had a lot of other criteria that we wanted to make sure that they were qualified and could work on the project.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that? So explain to me, and I'm just asking for an explanation, I'm sure it's right, the innovative project approach and potential project cost was a big gap. So why would ECI have so much, I mean, that's a huge gap, superior than Irwin?
It was, and there's actually a few categories I would point out, Mark, that have a similar gap like that, like the next one, the allocation of work. And really what we found was the proposal from Hall Irwin was lacking in that category. They didn't really give us any detail or any thoughts about how they could have an innovative project approach or propose cost savings in the project.
So by innovative, they took what you gave them and just went with it as opposed to making some suggestions on how to improve what you gave them?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and when we're looking for that CMGC partner with the project, we're looking for somebody who's going to come and work with us to bring the project together, bring it in as value-oriented as possible, but still provide the services that we're trying to provide to the town. So for us, when we were writing the RFP and reviewing them, that's a big part that we want to make sure that we have a team partner in there. And it's not just, we're going with a low bid number there. Any other questions on the RFP scoring? So after we had the unanimous support of all the reviewers, we moved into pre-construction services with ECI. The design team moved to 100% construction documents. The reason we bid partial drawings there is because if, when we're working through this final phase with the contractor, if they see cost savings, we want to implement them into the design process rather than finishing the design and then coming back and redesigning with their recommendations. So we did do the final civil engineering, landscape, and irrigation drawings. We did design development-level building drawings. The building was actually just lagging a little bit behind us as far as the rest of the park. And we got the final geotech report. ECI helped us evaluate all those plans for cost savings and constructability issues. We've definitely found some cost savings in some items, the building, the fencing, and the water lines. But then we found some additional costs as we detailed those out as well in the irrigation, the landscape, the stormlines, and then some based on the geotech report. I'll talk a little bit about, just for example, the landscape. As we were working through the project, there was an increased cost in the landscape and we were scrutinizing that a little bit. Because we really, when we put out the RFP, we were very consistent with the quantities that were there. However, when ECI put together their construction schedule, there's a chance that some of our plantings are going to lag into 2025. So then there's an escalated cost to reserve those plants and then store them for that extra amount of time. So there's a little extra cost in the landscape. Allowances, so there are several allowances that are shown in the project budget for this project. And I did want to just address how those are used. The allowances will be used by the town to award the additional scope items that are not 100% designed and priced. The allowances that we have in the project are the restroom building. That CD package was issued just on last Friday. We've been working very closely with the architect and the contractor to make sure that as they're going through their final design, we're VE-ing and making sure that all those costs are included. So we're very comfortable that the number that we have in the allowance, $815,000, will cover the cost of the building. But since we don't have final pricing on it, we're treating it as an allowance. A similar one is the large and small rule signs. We matched the design of the rule signs that we've used in the other parks. For example, the large rule sign, the one that is at the community park that has the cabinets that open up where we post and everything like that. I think when we did Phase 1 in the community park, it was like $11,000. When we put it out at the reservoir, it was like $14,000. When it got priced this time, it was at $26,000. So we had two of those in the project. And I kind of talked about it with the team and we decided that was a ridiculous amount of money to spend on two signs. So we are going back and trying to keep the same size, keep that cabinet, but maybe try to refine that design a little bit so that it's a little bit less expensive. It just seemed, those are the things that we're looking for as we're going through and reviewing the bid tab, the numbers that jump out that are just kind of, don't really pass the eye test there. So we're working with the sign fabricator and doing some VE on making those signs better. Site electrical, we have an allowance for there because we did add a little bit of scope to that as they were working through it. The site electrical is included with the architectural package. So we just got the final drawings on that. But when we talked to the contractor, they feel comfortable with that number is more than enough to cover what that additional scope is going to be. And then we had some geotech allowances. The geotech report was issued in the very beginning of this month. And they came back with some conservative recommendations. So we're continuing to work with them. They had a two-foot over-X rip and recompact under all of the post-tension slab quartz. They had some kind of very aggressive footing design for the shelter. So we're going to continue to work with the geotech. The numbers that are in the allowances are the numbers we think are the conservative numbers. But as we work with them, we think we can bring those numbers down. So we wanted to keep those as allowances as opposed to awarding that scope. That way, everybody has the pressure to keep pushing those numbers down as we get through the final design on those. But that being said, we've had exhaustive conversations with the contractor. We feel like the numbers in the allowances are enough to cover the scope pieces that we're still waiting to award. A quick topic on total project cost. So staff is using a total project cost method to compare the project scopes. So the total project cost is not just the construction dollars, but it is the 5% construction contingency. I think we've all been through projects where we know how unexpected things come up in construction and that's what that contingency gets used for. We have some utility services, so those are owner costs that the town will pay directly for, the transformer and main line, for the utility, for the restroom building and the rest of the power to the site, and then construction observation and contract administration. So when we talk about a total project cost, that's the full number that's in the CIP, not just a portion, which is what the general contractor is. not just a portion, which is what the general contractor is going to receive. So what we're asking for tonight is a construction award. So, and we are requesting an additional $400,000 to do that alternate scope. The way I've talked about it with the finance department is what we're doing is we're doing more scope today than we anticipated and for less money than we're planning on doing it in the future. So we had $1 million, which would be, after you take out the tennis courts, about a net $750,000. We are then doing that work for an additional $400,000 today. So that's today's dollars versus 2026 dollars, which as we're all familiar with, those dollars get more expensive as we move out. So our base bid is 4.9 million. The alternate cost is 1.2 million. So we're requesting a total project cost of 6.175 million, which is again $400,000 over the $5.775 million capital improvement plan budget. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm fine with the increase, actually. But do we have the money for the $400,000?
Yes. So we, again, I've been in pretty close contact with the finance department. We are anticipating, we're not anticipating, we are going to delay the construction of the T-Rock Trail project to next year. There's a couple of reasons for that. The primary one is that-
Next year, so is this budget for '25 or '24?
So there's $800,000 in the T-Rock Trail budget in 2024. And so we're going to defer that project to 2025. Half of that money we're going to ask to use in Wildwing.
Thank you.
We're, I'll tell you, the reason we're pushing that project out is that, number one, as you guys know about the T-Rock Trail, we have an existing easement that goes about 2/3 of the way between Harmony and Busgrove. And then we've been struggling to get that last third connection all the way up to the reservoir. Through the development review process, the McMorris subdivision is providing that connection. However, they're not going to be constructing it until probably later in this year. So we don't want to build our trail piece to basically 2/3 of the way and then wait for them to make that connection. We want them to make their connection first, and then we'll bridge the gap between the two of them. The other piece is that we're working on the reservoir, an update to the reservoir master plan this year. Where that trail is going to access the reservoir is not where we had historically thought it would. So we have some access improvements that we need to make at the reservoir as well. So we want to have a little bit of time to get all of those things put together so that when we build the T-Rock Trail, you can basically go from Harmony directly into the reservoir.
I appreciate the mayor's question. I was going to have a similar comment. I appreciate the thorough explanation. It's always a good question of if we're going to ask for more money, where is it coming from? What are we cutting money from? I mean, that's what it always comes down to. So I appreciate that explanation, and I'm comfortable with deferring the T-Rock Trail in order to, what appears to me, to be reducing the price tag overall on the total Wildwing Park design. It also seems like maybe there's the potential to shorten the timeline a little bit on getting all the way through Phase 3 construction, which I think would also be a fantastic point. So thank you for that. And then I guess I just want to thank staff for the initiative taken to look at how to organize this project. I think that took a down to these finer details with the signs and how you're juggling the phases and the different projects. I think that takes a bit of creativity and initiative, and I appreciate that and the work you're doing on that. So thank you.
Robert? We only got two folks to bid on this. That's, I suppose, a little bit disappointing. I think it's good to see three when we can. Any thoughts on why we didn't attract more?
We had a few more at the pre-proposal meeting, but we are seeing that kind of across the board that we're just getting less bids on these projects. I think that we have a very comprehensive submittal requirement for that RFP. And I think that, you know, while I don't think it's excessive, I think that it might scare a few people away. Like, I think the upfront cost for the information that we're asking for is significant, I think, for people going after these projects. I'm not, I mean, it's a, you know, we're awarding an over $5 million construction contract. So in the scheme of those things, it's not a lot of money, but I think, you know, it does take significant effort to put those proposals together.
At community park, where we've just put in pickleball and tennis courts, other than anecdotal evidence, have we got any data on utilization? And are the facilities that were put in getting used, or?
They are. I don't think that we have, we don't have anybody stationed out there that's keeping track of those things. So I think most of our data is anecdotal. However, we do get, and I'll let Tom fill in here, but we do get a lot of requests for people to reserve those courts. And right now, we're not, we're not letting people reserve those. However, once we have another place for people to go, then I feel like it'll be much easier to allow people to reserve them. Do you want to add on to that? Okay.
Thanks. I know this will make Phil cringe, but is there any chance pickleball is just a fad?
I can feel, I can feel Phil cringing behind me. But I don't think so. And the reason I don't think so personally is because I think that the smaller court that pickleball is played on, while it is still a rigorous game, I think it takes a little bit of the athleticism that, say, tennis has out of it. And I think it allows people to play of different abilities, right? So I think, you know, you can see people of different generations being competitive in pickleball, where you might not see that in some other court sports.
Thanks, Brian.
I can see that not everyone in the room would agree with the athleticism point. I'm not good at either, so for me, like-
I should have clarified that saying the recreational players-
I'm just teasing you, I'm just teasing. I just want to comment on that additional allocation piece. I definitely feel like that would be beneficial to do at this point, just with the cost savings. Even though it doesn't look like cost savings here, we would know that waiting a couple of years would actually add many hundreds of thousands of dollars to that item. And then I just want to point out, for anyone who is watching the state of the town, I'm not sure if I pointed out the correct areas for the Phase 1. So if you watched that, please look at this instead. I can't remember. I feel like I said community garden might not have been in that, I'm not sure. But, so if I said something incorrectly, look at this picture here is what we will be referencing for tonight.
Yep, and we'll get a recap for the council meeting up, and I can supply that graphic so we can make it very clear.
Brian, while we're on this slide, can you kind of walk me through project timelines? Because I see the blue and the red, and then everything kind of on the right is for future timelines, right?
Correct.
So can you just kind of walk me over the big picture of this project and how we're allocating money and what the timing of the rest of this project looks like as well?
Yeah, so we had originally anticipated the first phase in 2024, the next phase in 2026, and then the next phase in 2028. The next phase, which was originally called Phase 3, which would now probably be called Phase 2, and might be broken up into separate phases, sub-phases as well, I think as we see the utilization of this park and then the demand for some of those things. The tennis courts, I think, are, you know, could be a standalone project. Everything is kind of prepped for them right around there. The parking lot will be a rather large endeavor because it's just, it's a lot of cost. I think without a lot of program benefit is the way I'm looking at it. You know, we have a gravel parking lot in that location right now. We do want to bring it up to our standard, which is a paved parking lot. But as we talked about in the master plan, we don't really want to do that at the expense of some of the other amenities that we wanted to get in the first phase. And then the other piece, the other kind of big pieces there are the skate park. And I think that as we enter into the post-master plan that's going to happen this year, I think we'll get a lot of feedback about the skate park. And is this the right place for the skate park? Should we have a more centralized location for that? So I do think there might be some flexibility in the future about what that third phase really even looks like.
And did I hear you say potentially what are our cost savings on by doing it now was 300? Is that what your estimate was from seven to four? Or what number was that? I just want to make sure.
So the scope, so we had $1 million in 2026. And I'm estimating that the courts right now are 360,000, right? So, but the scope of the red, you know, the cost for the red, let me just go back to my, is 1.2 million. So even though we, if we were to do that scope in the future, it's probably a $1.6 million cost instead of the $1 million that we're showing out there in 2026. So we're getting the $1.6 million cost minus the courts. So we're getting-
1.3?
I'm doing a lot of math on the fly, and I don't think it's actually adding up, to be correct. So I'm just going to disclaim that first. Essentially, we're awarding $1.25 million for the alternate, and we're building everything that was supposed to be covered by the $1 million except for the tennis court.
Okay.
I think I've talked myself into a larger circle. I'm not sure if I answered any question.
No, thank you, that helps me, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I just want to echo Brett's comments, like, the fact that you guys are getting into those kind of details with costs is, I think, great, and I appreciate it so much because we see it here, but we don't know the work you guys are doing to save costs. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So when, a couple of questions. The house that's there right now, will that be torn down at the very beginning of the project?
Yes.
Okay, and then second question, just thinking to the future. Since we are planning on potentially waiting to redo that main parking lot, what impact will that have on the use of the park once that step happens? Like, if we get this park up and people are using it, will we have to shut something down in order to do the parking? And I'm guessing that that, time-wise, is not as significant, but-
Yeah, I think the scope of the parking project can be pretty quick. I mean, we tried to, you know, we did a really, like, a 50% level design on all the things that are not in Phase 1, just to make sure that we weren't setting an elevation in the new parking lot that was going to be unachievable in the old parking lot. So we, and we tried to keep the old parking lot very close to where it needed to be. So I think it'll be a relatively quick construction project. But yes, if we did, we would try to time that so it was either like early spring or late fall, so that we weren't like in the meat of the sports season, you know, with the use on the fields and things like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Do I have someone move to approve Resolution Number 24, Series 2024, A Resolution Authorizing Budget Expenditures For the Construction of Wildwing Park Phase 1?
I move to approve the resolution as listed in the staff report, authorizing expenditures for the construction of Wildwing Park Phase 1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, first of all, Brian, thank you so much for, once again, working hard on another great project. I know you're instrumental in the police department. You're instrumental in the last phase of a community park. You're working hard on broadband, so I appreciate your quality work here. I will note, I share, I have a concern about only having two on the RFP. But that said, ECI has done work for us in the past. I think we've been happy with them. It sounds like they're showing, you know, some good responsibility and some of their value engineering, and they are bringing good ideas forward. I do think it makes sense to accelerate the Phase 2 stuff and get a little extra bang for our buck, so I appreciate that. Big picture, I think it makes sense to do this.
Brett? Luke? Okay. Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 24, Series 2024, A Resolution Authorizing Budget Expenditures For the Construction of Wildwing Park Phase 1, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Resolution Number 24, Series 2024, A Resolution Authorizing Budget Expenditures For the Construction of Wildwing Park Phase 1, passed unanimously. Do I have any other discussion items for everybody? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
A second?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post, bear adjourn.